I am not, I was ordering toner while I was here, so I heard Rockville Middle School. So I figured, okay, well, it's done with this, I must be productive. Well, you know what, it's not my money, so. It's the cafeteria's money. I don't even think that comes, does that come out of the cafeteria? I had to order toner for the cafeteria, so it comes out of cafeteria, they have their own little. Yeah, I don't think that affects us. Think anyway. But they did give me a charge, we need anything else. You actually go to a classroom? There's a.
I'm sorry, that is allowed to start. Uh, so we're listening to Arsenal sometimes. And I'm sure this is how they are. Yeah, it's. Yeah, because we started phone books. Well, all of them too.
All right, we are going to start our facilities committee meeting. We will start with a courtesy of the floor, chance for public comment on any agenda items. All right, seeing none, I don't see any discussion items, but that brings us to our first information item, three point oh one, our energy update.
Uh, nothing to report on that one this evening.
Good. Very low energy, like we're, we're going to coast into the end of the year. Um, all right. Second information item three point oh two is the Fountain Hill Elementary School project update.
Unlike the energy, there's lots of report on Fountain Hill project, so uh, we are progressing towards uh, construction here in the coming weeks. So we've held our first pre-construction meeting with the construction team, uh, great team to be working with, uh, went very smoothly. Mr. Vazile's team um, took us through that process to make sure we're, we are uh, firing on all cylinders and hit the ground running when the time comes. Uh, we've got uh, a lot of mobilization planning going on behind the scenes, like how do you get this machine spun up and ready to roll, land on site as soon as possible and get to work? So that's all coming together, uh, and lots and lots of submittals coming from the contractors, um, so they're, they're getting approval on all the different components that make up our new building. And um, those are flying in at a, at a crazy pace at this point, and uh, again, Mr. Vazile's team is turning those around, the alloy team, getting those things approved and ordered and taking advantage of savings where we can along the process.
Mark, if I could add on the submittals, one thing.
Yes, sir.
That there's one thing that uh, we may come back to the board on, we're working on finalizing that retaining wall.
Yes.
So uh, that retaining wall is, we're working with the shoring contractor, we're working through some logistics there, so we may come back to with the final layout of that. Uh, what we're working on right now, I think will even be more positive than what we had uh, originally planned, so that's the focus. I just wanted you to be aware, we might come back to you quickly with uh, a check mark to say, yes, please proceed on that, okay?
Yep, thank you. We've got a couple upcoming events, so on uh, Tuesday, May twentieth at six P M. out at Fountain Hill, we have a meet the construction team night. For the community to come out and uh, have any questions answered, concerns, uh, this will be our second community meeting. Um, hopefully we'll see some of the same attendees from then, now that we're closer to the activity, we can answer some questions and address any concerns. And then uh, right now, uh, on the calendar for Thursday, May twenty second, you have a groundbreaking uh, schedule, four P M. So mark your calendars, come on out and watch us break ground officially for the project. Maybe unofficially, but.
Mark, just for the board's memory, what will June look like basically as a timeline in the project where from the time where students, the current students vacate the building till when we really see things happening on the site?
Yeah, so as we wrap up the school year and June arrives, so June second will be the last uh, day of student learning in the existing Fountain Hill building. Then June ninth, we begin asbestos abatement on the site. Um, you probably won't notice anything going on at that point, maybe we have some fencing, we start mobilizing some of the site uh, work there. By the end of June, early July, probably early to mid-July, the asbestos abatement will be completed. Uh, by then we'll probably have some equipment on site, moving dirt, digging holes, uh, getting some of that uh, site work rolling. So by the, I don't know, by the end of summer, we will have um, started the process to start deconstructing the existing building.
It'll look like, it'll look like a construction site.
Any questions about any of that? Very exciting, and we were promised hard hats, just to confirm at the.
We, we have the hard hats for uh, the groundbreaking and then.
But you may continue, okay?
Yeah, and then, and you, you know, we'll have them there, and if we, you know, Jack and Mark schedules a, you know, site, board site visit at some point, you know, um, we'll, we'll definitely do that strategically, but I'm sure Mark will give you some good photo updates. We have some cameras scheduled and all kinds of good stuff, so you'll see it. Yeah, yeah, you'll be able to see that. I'm not a big fan of those, but you'll see it, okay?
All right, so that brings us to our next information item, three point zero three, the facilities used, use policy, sorry.
Thank you, so just wanted to give the board a, a heads up, it's information about our use of school facilities policy, it's policy seven oh seven. That's a policy that outlines how outside organizations and community groups are able to use our facilities when we're not in school. So this is all after hours use, um, so this policy really goes, reaches far and deep into the community beyond just our uh, regular school day. So a lot of folks are impacted by uh, this policy and how it's applied. So if I were in a presentation mode, this is a point where I'd, I'd launch a Kahoot or do an online poll and just uh, have some more facts and figures that even I was surprised going through this to share, so to date, this fiscal year, we have hosted four thousand one hundred twenty-eight lease events in our district. That's this July first to today. And that has been spread out among one hundred and forty-seven different community groups. So little bigger than I thought, actually, when I did the math. But when I started fourteen years ago, this policy had recently been revised, and I was told by those at that time, whatever you do, Mark, don't mess with this policy. So the effort to get to that point to the current policy was a two-year effort and a lot of, um, lot of um, hard work and coordination with a lot of those community partners to make sure we were meeting everyone's needs. But over those last fifteen years, a lot has changed. Our costs have increased, but the same price as we had fifteen years ago. Despite, I mean, zero doesn't really increase by fifteen percent, we, we, we give away our facilities pretty much to everyone who uses them, very few, um, very little revenue uh, to cover our uh, our use of our facilities. Uh, we've, we've discovered and lived with some loopholes over that time that need some addressing, some inequities and some, some uh, things we want to fix moving into the future. And we've added a lot of partnerships over the last decade that have really served to, I mean, one, meet the needs of our kids in our communities, but really, when it comes to this policy, we blurred the lines between where does school end and community begin. So we want to try to incorporate all those, those uh, those changes in this new policy. So despite the warnings of fourteen years ago, we're going to tackle this policy um, and try to match it to our current use and our cost needed to operate our facilities. In the end, we're not looking to make money, we want to just break even, cover our costs, that's the bare minimum. So over the coming months, we're going to start the process of closing those loopholes, engaging our biggest users, our biggest stakeholders in this uh, this policy and work towards finding a solution that meets the needs of the district, but also those one hundred and forty-seven community groups that we uh, we, we invite and love to have in our facilities.
One thing I had mentioned, and then I'll open this up for question, one thing I had mentioned while we were sort of previewing this meeting is to um, have this effort as we're exploring policies, reaching out to community partners overlap to various degrees with the um, athletics strategic planning process. Just again, those are not all of the folks that use the one hundred and forty-seven or not all athletic groups. Um, but to think about sort of the, the web of ath- athletic opportunities offered to our students, both by our programs or the programs of our partners, seemed like a good thing to think about. It's not the same thing as this facilities use policy, but, but could align really well. Do you have a question?
Yeah, um, question slash statement, when we're looking at uh, possibly raising the rental costs for community groups to utilize the space, it is, I just want to be clear that the activity that's going on does not directly benefit any B A S D program, curricular, extracurricular, co-curricular, that's where the rental comes in?
Correct, these are all outside groups.
Okay.
That are not in our programs.
Okay, then the, the follow-up question then is, can you estimate about how much revenue percentage comes in that ca- that covers whatever expenses are there? So I mean, it's like sixty percent, eighty percent of what is charged to these groups cover salaries, you know, whatever administrative costs are for opening the building, things like that?
The our total revenue this current fiscal year is about two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. That is almost entirely labor.
Right.
That's covering the custodians who come in, open up the building, clean up after things are completed.
And just to make sure the public understands it, when we have custodians come in for these things, typically it's overtime? Or is it during the regular hours?
If they're getting a bill, it is one hundred percent overtime. If community is using our facilities and we're there till eleven P M., we do not charge for custodians in our facilities.
Okay, um, then the, the last thing um, of question is, most of these organizations are their own nonprofit organization, is that correct?
Many are, yes.
Okay, so we have to be really careful with our community partners, we don't want to transfer all of these extra costs. We don't want to transfer all of these extra costs to nonprofits who are already struggling to maintain their bottom line as well. But we have to pay the people that we employ and we have to pay, pay them a fair wage. So there, there just has to be a little bit of, I, I would like a little transparency on what those numbers are so that when we raise these prices to cover those salaries, there's an understanding that we're being fair as best as we can. And I think the numbers are going to help that.
One, one point of clarification, that the labor rate has increased with the cost of our contracts. So while we don't, we didn't raise the 20 bucks it is to use a cafeteria, the labor all along has kind of floated with our current costs, so that we're, we're covering our costs. We're not making money, we're, we're breaking even in the labor. In a, in the truest sense, you mentioned about, you know, nonprofits are a, a large majority of those 147 users. Doesn't necessarily mean they don't make money, but we want to partner with them to make sure that it is, like, we want to incentivize those nonprofits that we want to have in our facilities. The, the community sports organizations, the, gosh, I brought the list along with me, it's, it's exhaustive. But yes, the way it's set up now, the nonprofits get facilities for next to nothing. So, I mean, that, and, and if the, if the, the, the team and the, and the board want to keep doing that, fantastic. We just want to, there's a couple loopholes we want to tackle, though, that we're, we're folks who, as an example, not to drag this on any longer, but as an example, you know, local travel sports teams where kids are paying, you know, extreme amounts of money to play, you know, volleyball, basketball, different sports, will use the National AAU, which is a nonprofit way up here at the 30,000-foot view, and take advantage of, you know, the same price that, you know, BTA would pay, which we think is not necessarily fair on the grand scheme. So that's one of those loopholes where we say nonprofit in the policy, that's great, but you can take this travel team, AAU team, that will go and borrow that, that nonprofit status from somewhere, you know, a million miles away and, and again, keep getting it for free like every other nonprofit.
Hello, I agree with you, it's like asking the NFL, you know, you can afford it. But I would also say that just in a, in a, in a landscape of market, you could tell I come from a nonprofit who's used the facility space for programs that we wanted BASD students to participate in with, and coming to a BASD facility helps the participation levels. So I think as a board, just really understanding the relationship and why these locations are so important to the success of the programs that rent space with us. It's also about access, and it's also not just for the nonprofits, but it's also about access for the students. The parents are sending them someplace familiar. And, you know, we, we, we just need to keep all of that in mind as well. Thank you.
Just some follow-up comments as a survivor of the rewrite of this policy a long time ago. It was a extremely complicated process, and I would encourage prior to whenever this comes back that board members, take a look at the policy, it's a complex policy. It has multiple levels, like if you're a level one, a level four, and we debated what goes here, what's nonprofit, what isn't. And Mr. Stein touched on it, but there are some nonprofits that are making a ton of money off our families and then coming in and paying next to nothing. But then there's a lot of nonprofits that really need the low-rent facilities and deserve to have it for free or the cost of a site manager or custodian, because it's the tricky balance of, they're not our buildings, they're the community's buildings, it's everybody's tax dollars that pays for them, maintains them and upgrades them and puts the space there. But then there is that thing where people are coming to us because we're the cheapest game in town. And if you went to Easton or you went to, I don't want to, I shouldn't even have said it, another district, but if you go other places, you're going to pay more, so if you go to Bethlehem, you can pay less. But then we do have partners who are close, and since you brought up BTAA, they do serve thousands of kids in multiple sports. And then you have, you know, little canes I know, and you have different groups like that that need us to survive. And they offset, and you, you know, you pay 50 or 60 bucks a season, not $3,000 a year. So we have to be cognizant of that, but what sounds simple, I will tell you, is not simple. Check out the policy and take a look at it, and, you know, Mr. Stein is smiling, he remembers it. But it was a, it was probably one of the more difficult things we did in my time on this board, was updating the facilities policy and who could rent for free and who paid a little and who paid a lot. And it, it's a complicated policy, so I encourage you to scour all, what, 30 pages of it if you have free time.
Just curious to know, are the building principals part of the discussion or part of that? I imagine that you do solicit their input, but my specific question is that are the building principals of the buildings that we utilize for space part of this committee or part of those discussions?
Yes, they are very much part of the process. They are the ones who approve the use of each group in their building. So we leave that at the principal level to say, yep, I'm available on Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
I, I mean more so the, as, as you look to develop the review process.
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be lots of stakeholders, building principals. I mean, the, you know, looking at our, our list of all those events, those groups that have lots and lots of events, I think have more say as to what.
Oh, okay, so they'll be part of it too.
I think, I think it has to be part of it. I don't think it would be fair to, to shut the door and say, hey, here's the bill now. I think they're part of the conversation as well.
So what are the, the regulations about sort of, or who, who can we not let in to use the buildings? Anybody?
I think our policy is pretty open, so if you want to come, we're open, kind of like our education, you know?
And is that by law?
I mean, we could write our policy however we like as far as the community use. I think ours is currently written that it's pretty much anyone wants to come, we can use them.
Yeah, it observes limited open forum, so if we would rent, for instance, to our lease to a church, we can't pick and choose which churches we like. So once you open the door for someone, similar have equal opportunity.
Any other questions? All right, well, then that takes us to agenda items for May 19th, 2025, our regular board meeting. The one I see on there, 4.01, is the custodial supplies.
This is a procurement policy compliance issue. This is just purchasing custodian, or purchasing still supplies, get us through the end of the fiscal year.
So that's the only one I see, so that brings us back to courtesy of the floor on any item? And courtesy of the floor. All right, open forum. Then we just need two minutes to be ready for the curriculum committee. All right, calling the curriculum committee meeting to order. First item, courtesy of the floor on agenda items. Any comments on agenda items? All right, moving on to discussion items, 2.01, this is board policy 237, electronic devices. So at the first reading, yeah.
So if you recall, last month, we talked about From Likes to Limits, about cell phones and social media and how it is influencing our students, the adolescent brain. And, you know, how is it impacting the educational space? And so the first thing I'd like to kick us off with tonight is, we, we are here ultimately to present our electronic device policy. But Mrs. Tossi, if you wouldn't mind scrolling to the bottom, I think the context and timing of this does matter. So first off, the policy that we were, we are currently looking to update was last updated in November of 2004, which coincidentally, 2004 was the year that Facebook was launched. But it wasn't launched for everyone. In 2006 is when anyone could start joining Facebook. It was in 2007 that the iPhone was put out on the market. 2010, Instagram became a thing. And so I just put this into context that when we originally wrote this policy, sorry, oh, sorry. So when we originally wrote this policy in 2004, the iPhone didn't even exist, right? And so many of the distractions, many of the things that we're now talking about as we talk about cell phones and social media and screen time and how it impacts the adolescent brain was not a part of the conversation. We are certainly overdue on updating our policy, and so I'm really grateful to have the opportunity to talk about it. We have done a lot since 2004 as it relates to cell phones. But really, our timeline that we're presenting this evening really cuts to some of our most recent activity. I have to give a lot of credit to Mrs. Tracy Herner, who is our Director of Student Services. I have to give a lot of credit to our Chief Pupil Service Officer, Mrs. Claire Hogan, Mr. Mark James, who oversees professional learning and technology integration. And I also have to give a lot of credit to Mrs. Nicole Buana, who has been working a lot on our cellphone, you know, guidelines and procedures and policy recently. We have also many teachers, many staff members, many administrators who over the last couple of years have really been taking this on as a major project, whether it be committee work, work within their classrooms, work within their school. So there are a lot of individuals who are really trying to rally around what's doing, doing best for students as it relates to our electronic devices. So starting back in spring of 2023, we started gathering input from staff with survey and focus groups. Then in the 23-24 school year, last school year, we developed a committee which included representation across K to 12. Some cellphone guidelines were beginning to be presented to different building administrators. We also shared this, some cellphone guidelines with PTOs, PTA's to solicit feedback. What does this mean for your child? What is your input? In the 24-25 school year, we conducted more in-depth research and collaborated with other school districts. We visited other school districts, we zoomed with other school districts to learn, and, and not just locally, nationally, about what are you doing, how is it working for you? And we explored, you know, what does a complete ban versus a restriction mean? We really examined the evidence and research around cell phones and their impact on academics and mental health. Most certainly, this school year, all secondary schools launched a cellphone restriction. That's really an umbrella for a lot of work that has happened over a number of years. I'm sparing you of all the nitty-gritty details there. And we've actually had teams of teachers and administrators do, conduct cellphone walkthroughs of just gathering a little bit of data, where are we at, what are we doing in each of our secondary schools? So tonight, we're here with you to present our first reading of the electronic device policy. Last month, we presented a lot of the evidence around, you know, what we're examining and considering as it relates to cell phones and social media as it impacts the school-aged child and their brain. We would be looking to do a second reading next week, a third reading the week after that, based off your feedback and, you know, your comments this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Hogan and Mrs. Tossi, if you wouldn't mind switching to the policy.
Well, good evening. So obviously, the first change that we made was we went from cellphone policy to electronic devices. All right, because we know that there's a lot of electronic devices that kids are bringing in that can be a distraction to education. I want to preface that this policy that you are reviewing tonight has been reviewed in depth by our solicitors. We also reviewed PSBA, put a draft together, sent it off to King's Pry. They then made some recommended changes, and so this is the final document that you see, ready for draft one. All right, so you will see that we have a purpose of what the policy is for there. I'm not going to insult you and read it verbatim, but that was not in the policy before. So what is the purpose? It's to maintaining focus and respectful educational environment, right? Our main goal is for kids to educate, to be educated and instructed without the least amount of distractions as possible. The authority section, which you will see there, was just one sentence previously. And you see the red in, that has listed that we've added to the, to the authority, meaning the Board of School Directors as well as the administrators in the implementation. All right, any questions so far? Okay, the next section that we've added is definitions. So we wanted to make, make it very clear what electronic devices are, and I think it's a pretty comprehensive list that we've identified. I apologize, there is a typo, so it should be electronic gaming systems, not gamely. All right. On page two, the next section is delegation of responsibilities. This was a new section that was added as well, and you will see that it identifies the responsibility, who's responsible of the regulations and building level procedures. I will tell you again, as Dr. Leeson had indicated, we are in the process of going through those procedures, gathering input from the building administrators. Excuse me, then guidelines, which was a section that was in the previous cellphone policy. You will see that we have added to that, that neither policy nor administrative regulation shall apply in the following circumstances, provided that the building principal approves in advance with collaboration of the above. So we have identified four areas of when that would be appropriate with appropriate approval for a student to have the device at it, at all times. So we have several high schools, students that are volunteer firemen, so they are allowed to, to have it. So that's one example, or they work on the ambulance squad or the rescue squad. All right, any questions with those guidelines? Go ahead, Dr. White.
Thank you, just two questions so far, I've, I've been poring through this, so I apologize in advance. In terms of a definition, I'm just wondering if there was consideration for Bluetooth devices, especially with earbuds that can read a cellphone in a locker or something like that? So it was just a, a, just a question of, is that under consideration? Bluetooth and, and the technology continues to advance. So I, if we're talking about distraction, I'm just wondering if that consideration's been there.
So you bring up a very good point. The way in which we articulated that here is we listed earbuds not tethered to a district-issue device. And maybe we could think of a different way to articulate that, but the thinking there is, we do have students who use headphones and we want them to plug in, and sometimes we even provide them with headphones to plug into their computer. And so to make that differentiation, we said they would be tethered. So we said earbuds not tethered.
Okay, thank you. The other question that I had was sometimes there's reasonably effective and efficient technology for students to use in note-taking that are electronic devices. And I don't see a reference to that here. I'm under, I'm assuming that goes under the guidelines of principal approval, but, you know, just like someone who needs to record the lecture a couple of times in order to distill the information, that's also under consideration?
So any electronic.
So any electronic device that falls under an IEP or an accommodation of 504, those obviously would be allowable, that they, we would be discussing that through that process.
And that's spelled out in this policy?
We will spell that out within the procedures under IEP 504s.
I mean, just to avoid those concerning phone calls that you'd have to explain over and over again. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. So on the last page, our attorneys added the following areas, loss or damage to electronic devices. Simply says that it's solely the student's responsibility. Student responsibility for data, for any data charges, that paragraph was added as well. Limitation on technical support was added, as well as the penalties for violations of the cellphone policy was also added to make things a little bit clearer. Questions?
So I think one of the things here, this, we really don't have a policy here, and I'm concerned that we're going to have six policies from freedom, liberty, because this is more of an authorization for regulation. And I want to make sure, we're going to have a uniform policy across the district, correct? I mean, because right now, or procedure, I should say. Right now, I think one middle school treats it this way, high schools treat it a little different. And I don't, I don't actually see a cohesive author banning of cell phones here.
So you're correct, that this is the policy, it is not the procedures. This grants the superintendent and/or designee to develop procedures that is then disseminated. We have been working on that, what I'll call collective efficacy, across all of the schools. Not going to tell you we're there yet. We're working on it. But it is our, we need to align the policy as a part of this work and ultimately getting to accomplishing what that might be. It is probably not in our best interest to outline elementary school will do this, middle school will do this, high school will do this within the policy, in that the last time we updated this was 2004. Now, we can update this every couple of years, but I think what we want to do is kind of aim to capture what should be in an electronic device. And then we have our procedures that we implement at the district level, at the high school level, middle school, and elementary school levels. But we are, it is our intention to have consistent procedures and follow-through at each of those levels. And again, we've been working in that direction, but we're going to be doing that much better next school year.
Okay. Because, I mean, right now, the current policy is the board prohibits possession of entertainment, equipment, communication devices. That's a, that's a policy. I think what we're changing to is more of an authorization to promulgate rules and regulations at schools to implement and enforce restrictions on student possession of, doesn't actually straight out say these policies and regulations, or I should say, the rules and regulations will ban cell phones from, students from using their cell phones during class time. And I, I think I prefer to see something more in our policy stating that our goal is that the regulation should ban the cell phones. I mean, that's my.
To follow up on that, maybe also write into the policy that this is not a building-level decision. It is not a building administrator or teacher decision, that it's, it's from the top down. And it's not, so that the process, procedure, whatever, is not a building, even though the elementary might be different from that. But what I think we're trying to avoid is that TJ has something different than Spring Garden, and East Hills has something different than Northeast, like having that cohesion. And so having that in at the policy level to prevent over time that happening is not a bad idea.
Yeah, just to echo that, I look at policy 204 attendance. It explicitly spells out all the various attendance rules, truancy, state meetings, 10 days, six days, last updated in 2020. I will not vote yes on this policy until I see the procedures. I'm not saying I don't trust anyone, but we're going to, I know what will happen. We will vote yes on this in two weeks. Summer will come, we will forget, everyone's busy, you guys are working behind the scenes, it'll be implemented. But I need to see it attached to the policy. I want strong language in the policy that says, this is what we believe as a district, and then the administrative procedures break that down. Because I understand what we believe versus K1, 2, and 3 is a heck of a lot different than 6, 7, 8, and then even 9, 10, 12. But as you tell, I feel very strongly on this, and I want to see, like, very specific language in the policy that at least speaks to our intent. And we have many other, I just pulled attendance, but we have other policies that are very specific. There's no reason this one can't be.
Okay.
I have no problem seeing what the different restrictions as a general, the general procedure for elementary is this.
Okay.
As, or, you know, and I don't know, I'm not the lawyer to do the wording on that, but this is way too broad, this is useless right now. And that's not an insult to anybody working on it, it is a work in progress, that's why it's reading number one. We had a good discussion last month, and I think we were all over the place and people didn't know. But I don't know that this policy gives us any teeth to do anything at the moment. It gives us a lot of definitions, and it's a good start, but I need to see some sort of language in there that talks about what our actual intent is.
So we can gladly bring that back to you next week. Because we do have drafted procedures by grade level, and we have been working with our different level teams, et cetera. So we can gladly bring that to you next week, that's not a problem.
And we, we don't ever see procedure manuals, nor should we. That's not our role to get that low on the board. But I think for something of this level, I think, at least for me, I want to see what it is that we're actually implementing, because it is such a drastic change.
One, one thing I'll offer as we talk about this is, just because we've done a lot of research on this topic, I want to make a distinction between a restriction versus a ban. A ban is no cell phones in the building anytime, anywhere at all. Restriction is, you, cellphone use is restricted at specific times. I would offer that we have had, as recently as a couple months ago, we presented to the Parent Advisory Council at the district level, just similar to what we presented last month about what we know about cell phones and, and the adolescent brain. There is this, from, and I just share perspective, there is a strong contingent, I think, in our community that is worried about safety and the ability to be in contact with their child. We do not believe that that should be happening during class time, but the restriction versus ban is kind of one of those differences. I just want to share that as a perspective. We are not looking to be, we're not looking to be soft on the policy, we're not looking to encourage cell phones. We, we believe learning happens in the classroom, we believe that cell phones are a significant distraction to that, and thus we need to place appropriate restrictions in class. And we also need to support that adolescent brain in making really tough choices. And we can support them by providing structure, which policy and procedure can do.
Yeah, and I agree with that 100%. I don't expect that no cell phones will be in the building, back, back pocket, off and away, whatever it is. And the vast majority of our students are fine with that every day. But if this, to me, is giving teeth to our teachers and building administrators to end the problem when it becomes one. Certainly not saying you have to leave them at home. Because I heard, I heard some of the comments from that after the last meeting, and that's not the intent of, you can't have a phone in school, that's ridiculous in 2025. No one's going to say that. But to say that if it's out and in the middle of class, I'm sitting there like this, and my teacher can't do anything because we have no policy or procedure in place, that's my concern. And that's where I hope we're going. And again, I don't want to be too harsh, I'm sorry. There's a lot of work that went into this. I just personally want to see more of our direction of where we're trying to go, at least at the policy level. And then, of course, the procedure part can define it out. But I don't think we do rush and approve this in May. We have June, we have August, we know where we're going. If it's done in May, that's awesome, that's great, sooner the better. But it's not going into effect until next school year, anyway.
Yeah, just to, I understand the nuances. And so to Mike's point, the clearer we can be at this level, the better. And I know we talked about this previously, but the only way this is going to be a successful endeavor is if it is clear from the top down. And I think that the teachers need to be supported, and so being able to look clearly and say to everybody involved, here it is, will help them and the students also. It'll be clear for them and their, their guardians and, and everyone. So the, the more detail we have at this level, the better, in my opinion.
I'm wondering if the policy would also cover things like, and maybe Mrs. Bachman could answer this question. It's not that it's the tools, it's what's on the tools. So are there certain blocks, you know, with school-distributed Chromebooks that does not allow for Instagram access or other things like that? Same thing with, you know, if a, if a student brings in their own laptop. This is more for the secondary level, but it's, it's more a question of, you can limit the tools itself, but, you know, some kids are really creative and knowledgeable, and it's the software that'll get you, right? So, and then there's research tools, and all of those other things that could also be a learning opportunity for the leader in me in terms of being civically responsible with social media. I don't, I don't, you know, if we're not really addressing the, the intent, as Mr. Fashionato said, in our policy, I think that we're going to have to keep coming back over and over and over again with unintended consequences that we now have to answer for. So it's, it's a behavior. It's, it's, it's a health thing, right? So I just want to make sure that that is really holistically embraced in some way. Just like Miss, you know, like Mr. Lozzi said, I'm not a lawyer to write it, or maybe it was Mr. Fashionato. But it really is clearly the intent that we're going for. And the intent is not a restriction, the intent is safety and, and focus. Thank you.
And just to clarify, when I said ban before, I meant in the classroom. I don't think, I think, you know, I talked to my daughter, and she said, oh yeah, kids always have their phones out when they're distracting in the learning environment. So, I mean, keeping them in the bookbag is fine. I know, you know, a lot of parents like to know when their kids are on the bus, they track them using the GPS and everything. So I don't have a problem with taking a phone to a school, but I do think that there should be a, something clear in our policy saying that during learning time, phones should not be out, and that should be part of the regulations.
Also add, too, that I'm actually concerned that, you know, it's not just during the class time, but also in the hallway, too. I think the hallway can be just as bad as anything else, that's the, the fights, the provocations, all that kind of stuff. So for me, it would be important to have not just a classroom ban, but a ban during school time. Or not ban, but restriction during school time as well.
So I'd like to ask some clarity around that comment, if that's all right. Normally, yours has questions, but. So as we've currently reflected and designed our procedures, which we haven't shared with you, we will bring to you and share, at elementary, it's no cell phones out anytime, ever. At middle school, it's no cell phones out, it has to be put away in the bookbag, whatever, but not out at lunch, not out in the hallways, et cetera. At high school, it's not outing during class time. And so I just want to, you know, before, you know, we enter into an exchange in a future week, and you say, well, I had, I wanted to, I want to ask for clarity around, you know, what are the thoughts on the high school piece of being able to self-regulate in the high, in the hallways and, and in the cafeteria? So.
I, I personally think that they don't need it in the hallways. I think that every time you allow a student to get the phone out, every time they go into another classroom, it's another opportunity for having, it's, I just, and then we're putting it on every teacher, every period, to have to sort of police that. Whereas if it's not, and I think if there are times, because we said restrictions, not bans, if a student goes to a teacher and says, you know, Mr. Fashionato, I need to respond to a text from my mom, can I pull my, and the teacher says, yeah, you can do it right here, and then put it away, that's fine. I just feel, for the sake of everybody involved, that the more opportunities to pull them out, they're going to say, well, I was in the, it just feels that you're just complicating and adding challenges that don't necessarily need to be there. And I realize that the high school level, they should be able to self-regulate, but the whole reason we're in this vote is because cell phones cause such challenges on self-regulation. It's my thought, anyway.
So I'm not going to, I'm not going to fully disagree, but I want to, I guess, for me, clarify policy versus procedure versus expectation. So the policy as it presented, in understanding what Mr. Rashidi said, I think, I'm inclined to agree with him that this reads very much of like, like, this is what we want, this is, this is not a waiver, but what was the word that you used, an authorization? And not like, this is the rule, this is the expectation, which many of our policies have looked like. So I understand that. But I also understand that the purpose of this is honestly to be as wide breadth, and correct me if I'm wrong, so that procedures can be in place that give the leeway to the buildings to do what they need to do. All right? I understand that. I, my, so honestly, I don't have a question on the policy. The policy, to me, you know, with the input that has been given from the board, rework, rework things, that's fine. I'm, I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Fashionato, too. Like, I, I would like to see what the procedures would look like that would be in tandem. But I want to speak really to my colleagues on the board and to members of the cabinet. So once we have something in place, the execution of it is going to be a bear. And we need to be prepared for what that's going to look like. And I will speak for me, I want to make sure that we have protections in place for those who we are holding responsible to make sure that the policy is being implemented. I won't speak to anything that is being discussed right now or, or being litigated at the moment, but this is not the first time. And this, what we're talking about today is not in response to things that have happened recently. So I just want to be clear. But at the same token, I do, I do recognize the, but I do recognize the fact that some of the major issues that we have when it comes to student discipline regarding the use of electronic devices is the, you will pry this from my co-dead fingers. And at what point are we saying, teacher, I expect you to remove this from the student, which I'm not reading here, I'm not saying that we're saying that. And at what point are we saying, listen, if I say it is what it is, then it is what it is? And what point does a student get to say? No. And at what point does a parent get to say, and you will not remove it from my child? That is not, that's not here. And I, and I don't expect that to be here. But when we talk about the execution of it, that's really where the problem is. How are we getting the students and the overall community that is not in schools to understand why this is important? Why this, this is causing an issue? How are we supporting and empowering our teachers to do so? And, and, you know, whether it's a training of like, we are not prying things from students' hands, you know? You know, and at the same token, like, what does discipline look like when they, you know, frankly, you know, a student makes a, makes the lesson for the teacher? I wish you would, and what you going to do? So my soliloquy is getting lost here. But I just, what I'm saying is that I understand the policy, no problem with the policy. We need procedures, but whenever we get procedures, we really need to see what that, what is that going to look like when we have to walk it through? Because if, there's going to be problems here, and I don't want us not supporting teachers, after we said that this is what we want teachers to do.
Yeah, like policies, procedures also have to be clear, enforceable, have, have the targeted responses for them. I'm hearing from the board, really a two-step, one, enhance the intent of the policy to include what the discussion has been here, and then bring back some specific procedures that show the evidence of that as far as its operation in the schools.
I actually do have a question about the policy formation. Student input and creating at this point, what did that look like?
The creation of this policy, and this is common, is we start with the recommendation of PSBA as standard policies. We then made some adaptations, and we also made sure it was reflective of what BASD is doing. And, great, for instance, not significant change, but for instance, we added the piece about the earbuds not tethered. That wasn't in there before, right? And then we had our solicitors review the policy, right? And they had some sign. And they had some significant additions at the, at the conclusion and a few nuanced changes throughout. As it relates to the procedures, let me give you a, for instance, of some of the work that has been done. Three years ago, and I'm giving you one very focused example. Three years ago in the summertime, well, during the school year, Freedom High School was recognizing a huge issue around cell phones. They were working with students, they were talking to the kids, they were talking to the teachers. They brought teachers in in the summertime and they developed some internal Freedom High School procedures on how are we going to handle this? And so at Freedom, they got, you know, brown envelopes and pencil cases and put them out on the desk. But there was a lot of thought that went into the detail of how are we going to implement this? And so one of the tricky pieces of any work we do with cell phones is at the end of the day, we have a highly addictive device in kids' pockets. And every time, and we talked about last month, a typical day, a kid receives 237 notifications. Every one of those notifications is a dopamine hit in the brain, right? And so they did a really outstanding job with their efficacy and their work as teachers. And students provided feedback, what they liked, what they didn't. So this has happened now at Liberty, across the four middle schools. What we have been working to do is really bring unity to the secondary level. And we're endeavoring to have that next school year. But my point is that at each, we've met with students, we've met with student governments, we've talked to the kids about what are your thoughts? We've done that at student advisory at both middle and high school for our superintendent student advisory. But throughout multiple years, we have been talking to kids, talking to kids, talking to kids. It wasn't a single event that in which we've chatted with kids about their thoughts on cell phones being not a part of the classroom environment. So that's a lengthy response. But as it relates to the policy, the policy is not significantly impacted by the input of students. The procedures that we have been developing for K to 12, BASD has been informed by conversation with students and parents and teachers and administrators.
In this policy, I see this as a how. A restriction of cellphone or electronic devices actually support all of the policies of the programs. So when, when one reads, goes back and reads all the 100 policies of academic standards, non-discrimination, you know, discrimination, harassment affecting students, a restriction of these electronic devices support all of these other policies. So this is more of not necessarily a what, but a how we support the rest of our learning environment. And I think that we really, the danger that I see in a policy that gets so specific, doesn't leave room for the authority of the procedure, doesn't leave room for us understanding why the restriction is here. And if we go back and look at all the 100s, a lot of that becomes very clear. So if there's a way that a policy can refer to other policies that might help us understanding the holistic view of what we're doing.
It's super, super quick, just when, kind of to one of your points, but when this would be all approved and done, it would become part of the handbook that we all have to sign, guardians all have to sign, correct? Before, like would. That's what I.
You sign the framework for citizenship. So I don't know if you want to speak to that piece of it. It's in there.
It is in there. Just to buy it, okay, just to your point of.
Can we go back to page one for a minute, please? Right in the middle, under authority. So that first paragraph in red there, the board of directors authorizes the administration to implement and enforce restrictions on student possession and use of electronic devices. The board's goal is to restrict the use of electronic devices in the classrooms and common areas throughout the academic day, period, end of sentence. That would make me happy. I think it could be that simple. And then that directs you to the guidelines and procedures, but it at least gives the intent of what the policy is trying to do. Without then having to have pages and pages of, this is what we're going to do in every case. Because what I'm hearing, and please correct me if I'm in the minority, is that our intent is to restrict the use of cell phones in classrooms and hallways and cafeterias during the academic day from nine to 3:30 or seven to, seven to 2:12 or whatever it is. Your previous question, Dr. Lee, and I am willing to allow, allow, like I have that authority. I am willing to say in the high school level, if the principals want to try hallways or cafeterias or something and see how that goes, fine. If we just want to say outright, nope, then I'm fine with that too. But I do, I've always said, I think high school's a different animal. And there are still plenty of high school fights that go all over TikTok and social media. And whether we ban them or not, they're still going to be there. But I do think when you get to be 17, 18 years old, if you can't walk down the hallway with a cellphone, you know, God help us as a society. So I do think at the high school level, the principals, you know, get their feedback and see if they're willing to try the hall, do the first semester or school year and see how it goes. And if there's no major, major problems, then maybe that's the way to go from nine through 12. But if your recommendation is just to say we're uniform, that's fine too. But I, I agree with you, high schools is different.
Did you capture that language in that sentence that you just had?
No, I can text it to you.
All right, because that was what I was.
It's recorded.
That's what I was going to do to enhance the, oh, that's right. I'll check.
Mrs. Bachmann has it.
Yeah, yeah.
I turned my light on.
But that's the enhancement I was looking. Yeah.
Just to reinforce what, what folks were saying is I, I am very hesitant to open the door to putting principals or teachers, as you mentioned, as the frontline sort of disciplinarians on this one. I, I really think that we need to protect the folks who are going to be enforcing the policy, the procedures that are related to this policy by saying, in the same way, it's not a discussion if you're caught with marijuana on campus, it's not a discussion, like there are clear, like that's not up to individual teachers. Like we have named things and there are lots of things in our framework for citizenship that this is not a debate. I understand that you didn't think it was as big a deal as, as it is, but like the board has said, no. And I think with this too, restrictions, bans, but to have that level of protection for principals and teachers, that they are not the ones asked to be the bad guys. They are not the ones being stricter than somebody else in that building, it's coming from here. And I think that's really important. I also second your thoughts on, you know, I, I think that even in the high schools, classrooms, public spaces, cafeterias, because otherwise I absolutely think at the beginning of every class session, it's going to be a battle all over again. And it doesn't have to be. And it's actually incredibly helpful for our students to eat lunch actively with their friends. That's, that's a good thing. And I will tell you, like, we talk all the time about the kids we see who have graduated from high school, who come to us later. And a huge challenge at the college level, as we're thinking about students' social and emotional wellbeing, is trying to work in more time that they are used to socializing in real time, in 3D with their peers. And to have our students have more opportunity, because we're so mean and we're going to force them to actually talk to each other in the cafeteria. I'm like completely, completely okay with that, even if you're 17 years old. I think it's important because it's a real problem for some of our 20-year-olds who have trouble finding connections to other students because they're not used to those kinds of public spaces and social environments. So just, you know, just to watch language as I'm going through here, just anytime it authorizes, there's one in the paragraph right after what Mr. Fashionato was saying, you know, authorizes school administrators. Just to be really clear, that that isn't sort of school administrators, principal, building principals to sort of do as they so choose, but there are clear procedures that are elsewhere, it doesn't have to be all itemized here. But these are folks who are authorized to, to enforce this clear policy versus sort of create procedures and then open themselves up to the young. We, we can be the mean ones and then make everybody's life a little bit easier as they enforce it. I felt left out, so I wanted to add something. My turn. Totally in favor of no cell phones, elementary, middle school. I also think too, if, like everyone has been saying, if we're going to have clear procedures and consequences, for us to properly support our teachers, it has to be followed through on every, by every building administrator. This isn't like a, well, I'm not going to file that referral or anything like that. Because I know, we all know that happens and it can't. Like if, we have to support our teachers. If we're going to go through this whole rigmarole to do this, the, the building administrators have to follow through and stick with every referral or.
We wholeheartedly agree with you. It has to be enforced in every single classroom with consistency. It has to be enforced alphabetically as it relates to how you're divvied up with your assistant principals. It has to be applied consistently across grade six, seven, eight, I use that as an example. It has to be applied consistently across our four middle schools. So vertically, horizontally, all of it, I, I understand, we wholeheartedly understand and agree with you on the need for consistency.
As I, I think, and I don't want to speak for anyone else on the board, a lot of feedback I get is that teachers are trying to do their job and they're trying to follow procedures. And a lot of times they feel it's, it's fallen on deaf ears. And then that's very disheartening, it's very discouraging. And then some just get to the point, well, I'm not going to enforce that because it's not going to be followed through. So I, I thank you for that.
But I think we also need to emphasize too, that it's not just following through on the discipline side, but it's also following through with the expectations, right? We have to teach the expectations and work with the kids on the expectations of what needs, what our expectations are, right? So that they learn. It is a learned behavior. It's difficulty-changing behavior, when especially when it's been learned, it's going to take time. We can have those high expectations, but the consistency is really critical from the teachers to the administrators, to central office, across the board. Any other? That was a really good discussion. All right, moving on to information items, item 3.01, the future of instructional coaching.
Switching gears significantly. So if you recall, Dr. Silva, we, and Mr. Aristocazian presented, did a budget presentation at the last finance meeting. And during that presentation, as we were outlining, you know, trying to reduce our 25, 26 budget, one of the many things that we listed as a reduction was five instructional coaches. And at that time, Dr. Silva said, and Dr. Lee Sin will present at the next curriculum board meeting about the future of instructional coaching. So here I am.
And that form can follow function. And that it's not just a question of counting numbers or counting people, but where do we want to go? What will it look like and what's the best way of getting there? And total confidence in Dr. Lee Sin and her team to do it.
And so the document I share with you is a little bit of the, the vision of the future of instructional coaching. And so understanding that we have two objectives. Number one, to develop that longer-term vision. And number two, we have to take some necessary steps to reduce five employees in coaching as a part of that 25, 26 budget. And we recognize that we need to evolve into a smaller, more focused and integrated group. And I think tonight, one of the biggest things associated with this presentation is the term integration. When an English, when an English coach goes into a classroom, yes, they may be providing some literacy strategies. However, they also will be, they also currently do give, how do we do better student engagement? How do we do better student participation? Some, you know, general instructional strategies. But then also, how can we better manage our classroom? What are some things that we're thinking about in terms of social, emotional integration in our learning? And so we'll have to continue to support our teachers. We hope to do that through coaching because we know that number one, the teacher is the most important variable in the classroom. We also know that isolated professional development can become high, much more effective when coaching accompanies it. And so we can maximize with teacher efficacy our, our, our professional development through coaching. And so if we keep scrolling down, as I mentioned before, we're really integrating our work. And I am going to go item by item about what a coach does and does not. We are going to be working to significantly integrate our work, but a coach does identify teaching and learning needs. They do implement problem-solving actions with teachers to increase student achievement. But note that that comes from all different domains as it relates to classroom management, as it relates to math strategies, as it relates to lots of different factors that can help improve the instruction in the classroom. They build and develop confidential relationships with teachers. They support the implementation of effective and evidence-based instructional strategies. They facilitate conversation using data and student work to drive instructional decisions. They engage teachers in reflective thinking about their instructional practices. They operate from a growth mindset. They co-plan, model and support instruction. They participate in building-based decision-making teams. They, they do focused classroom visits. Some, they occasionally provide professional development presentations, such as morning meetings in elementary. They provide curriculum support, assist with data collection and support teachers with implementing different BASD initiatives. To maybe make a connection to our previous presentation on cell phones, whether you are a literacy map coach, a technology coach, a math coach, a social, emotional integration for learning coach, there is no doubt that next year, anyone who has the term coach in their title, maybe outside of our athletic coaches, will be supporting teachers in how to navigate a new cellphone procedure. And so that doesn't require, we don't need cellphone coaches, right? We don't need that as a specific item, but generally we support in an integrated way all the time. And so I listed on the other side, a coach does not, you know, operate from a deficit mindset or evaluate teachers, et cetera. But, you know, you can go through those in, in more detail. But ultimately, our next step is we're working to unify and solidify that student success team, which is the compilation of all of our coaches. We are looking to identify that 5.0 reduction. And, you know, as the years go on, we endeavor to support our teachers through instructional coaching. But we also have a responsibility to, you know, our taxpayers and our students. And, and so we may in the future have to do other reductions. That's not our hope, but we'll have to take it one year at a time. But for this year, we are really focusing on how can we best integrate? And yes, there will be some speciality. We will still maintain some English math, SEAL coaches and technology coaches. But again, instructional technology exists in all classrooms and all coaches can support. But, you know, there might be some need for some specialized support as it relates to, for instance, with our immersive learning center from Yvonne Zundell, who is one of our technology coaches. I don't know if our English coaches would always be that detailed on the immersive learning center. And so that's our future of instructional coaching. Any questions?
Okay. Great. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to agenda items for the May 19th regular board meeting. First item, 4.01, keys to literacy professional development and materials contract.
Sure, so we presented at a previous board meeting about our work with literacy. And keys to literacy has been one of our primary strategies for improving grade level instruction. And this is our work for next school year that we are contracting with them for.
Any questions? All right, moving on to 4.02, purchase of Acadians reading licenses.
Yes, so Acadians is a tool that we've been using for quite some time. It's how we benchmark our students and progress monitor them in elementary and middle school. On beginning of year, middle of year, end of year basis, you see all of the data from Mrs. Harper and that would be Acadians data. So this is a renewal of that product for next school year.
4.03, purchase of the flight licenses.
So this used to be called ESCAT. If you've ever heard a teacher use the term ESCAT, it's a small group instructional tool. And we use flight for our MTS model, MTSS model. And when we pull students for small group instruction, we also use it for progress monitoring. And this is a renewal for next school year.
Questions? Hearing none. 4.04, Brockle Middle School Mind and Body Club.
So this. So this particular MOU is a part of Brockle's comprehensive school improvement plan. And it is a summer program offered to their students. Sounds great. Moving on to four point zero five, Valley Youth House MOU. This is an MOU for Marvine Elementary School to provide school based behavioral health services. All right, so moving on to courtesy of the floor, Mr. Intellects.
Stephen Intellects, seven thirty seven Ridge. The electronic device policy is a needed policy, but this policy as I'm hearing tonight is could be very dangerous. And the reason I say that is this, that when you talk, when you say students, you're talking about pre K and twelfth grade. I'm sorry, kindergarten and twelfth grade. So there's a tremendous physical difference. Why was teacher's size is constant? Take an example where a kindergarten student has an electronic device and is told it's not to be had. They will comply, probably. Extrapolate that to a twelfth grader who's almost six foot. And a teacher might be five, five. A teacher is trained in teaching, but not in self defense. The policy assumes that students will comply. It it is a self implication as you read it, because there's no reference to these alternatives. And they can happen, as we recently know, about an altercation where it's teacher tried to remove his cellphone and making physical. So. What do you do if it's almost six footer is confronted by a five foot five's teacher? And the teacher says, now, here's the problem. The policy says building administrators, teachers and security, that's everybody. And of that everybody, there's probably only one group that is trained in self defense. And that's security. So therefore, if a twelfth grade teacher finds a violation and politely confronts the student and a student obviously will not comply, become belligerent. At that point, that teacher should cease and desist. Then how do you solve that? Very simple way, possibly have a buzzer. Teacher says nothing and hits the buzzer. Security gets the buzzer and they find out what room it's from. Security comes into the room and the teacher quietly informs the security what the problem is. Security confronts the student and security might be bigger than the student. So what happens? The students surrender their device. But as it reads now, there's a possibility for altercations with the teacher suffering. So I think that should be very, very serious consideration because that element might eliminate the danger of physical violence, so, and remove the danger from the teacher. So, but I really have serious pause with it.
Any others for courtesy of the floor? All right, open forum. Any items for open forum?
Just want to give a congratulations to the Nitchman Middle School Band. This past weekend, they competed in the Shannon Dew and Apple Blossom Festival and they were named outstanding middle school band in the firefighters parade.
Anything else?
Just executive session, student discipline and personnel.
Okay, all right.